All right, we're live.
Okay, there we go. Hello, everyone. Um, welcome to the September 24th, uh, school board meeting. While in non-public session, we discuss personnel changes, contracts, and security. All right, and no votes were taken. Next, um, first item on our agenda is the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, so we are going to open up the public comments. Uh, it is just about eight o'clock, so until eight thirty. And then we also have agenda review. You said you wanted to add something up to the agenda.
Yes, I'll review us.
With the water? Oh, no, the wa- no, we're not going to. The water we need to, we're going to do another day.
Oh, yeah, right, that was the other, but we're not doing it tonight.
Right, right, yeah, yeah. I'd like to add volunteer fare. Just to remember that that's coming up, then. One of the ideas somebody discussed. Okay. Um, next, action items. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from September 10th?
I have a motion to approve minutes from September 10th.
Okay. Uh, are they public and non-public or just public?
Public and non-public.
Okay, did we have a second?
I have a second.
All right, discussion. Great. The documents look really good. I did see one, one thing just I want, I think should be clarified by what we said. Um, it's on line 145. The Major General National Guard wrote to the school board, uh, because he was misinformed regarding, um, the school board, uh, had plans to sell the school land. Because it's not really the damn property, it's the school land. So if he was misinformed, he thought that we wanted to sell it. Okay. Anybody else see anything?
It's good.
All right, good. Perfect, thank you so much. Okay, Eric.
Yes.
Jess, Katrina.
Yes.
Kyle.
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. All right, what's next on the agenda? Superintendent for the board.
So, the manifest is out there. I'm not sure where it's at at this point, but hopefully that's happening.
Anybody have questions on the manifest?
Yes, um, there was a rather large bill for Health Trust, and I saw three different amounts. I think one was like roughly, it, it, it's written in three places and it, it was like a variation of a thousand dollars among all three places. So I just didn't know which one was accurate or if there was, um...
It's a breakdown. The large amount is for the medical and dental, you know, life, lung, disability. The, uh, the second one is, I think, for four thousand is for the adjustment, uh, of that same bill. And then the third and fourth is FSA and HRA.
Oh, okay.
So our health insurance covers a lot of things. It covers, once again, health, dental, life, and LTD, which is under one bill. And then HRA and FSA are the other two. And those are handled under another bill.
See, wha- wha- I guess what I'm seeing is this says total due 116, 311. And then this one right here says 111, 450. And I, I'm quite possibly, I'm not saying it, we'd be correct.
Less the adjustment. That is the adjustment, is it making sense?
All right, so, so the initial check, this is written as well, 111, 450. And then this amount comes up to the difference, totaling 116, 311. This is the adjustment, adjustment detail. We had, we added two there.
Oh, so it's less than?
Yes.
To equal that, okay.
And this.
Okay.
And this, and this.
Yep.
And then the other two. Oh, go ahead.
But this is, so this is in total?
This, this check is this one. And then the 48, 16 one.
Okay, it might just be another.
It's at the bottom, it's on another.
It was another.
Yes. Yeah, right here.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you.
Great, thank you, April. Do you have any other questions after this? I don't have any, so, anything else? No, okay. So if you have anything, there's no, so, okay. All right, so, um, reservations?
So we don't have any reservations tonight, but we do have three, uh, new hires. One, let me get my papers, which are right here. One of the new hires is Ashley Caswell. She will be coming to us as a long-term health teacher substitute. She'll be filling in for our health teacher while she's out. Uh, we're looking at 252, 37 per day, which is, um, the budget. It's actually part of the, the budget process that we figure that out on an annual basis, so that's what she'll earn per day. And it's clear in the contract that this is from the start date, which was September 22nd, through the return of that person. And that's written in there in multiple locations, so there's no doubt. I know last year there was some concerns. Did we make it clear that you're not contracted beyond the return of that other person? The answer is yes, it's in the contract at multiple locations. Do you want all at once, or...
Eric, what, or whoever's going to make the motion, what do you want to do?
If I'm making it, I'll do them individually. If someone else wants to do it differently, that's fine.
I'm going to do the long-term stuff.
Yep, so, I move we accept the nomination of Ashley Caswell for the position of long-term health teacher substitute, with an effective date of the 22nd of September. This is until the teacher returns. This is at a daily rate of $252.37 a day. Um, over 26 pay periods pay ro- pay rated. This is from the general fund.
Okay, we have a second?
I have a second.
Discussion. And, and Ashley has already started and we've heard very positive feedback. All right, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle? And Debbie, yes. All right, so I'm going to sign the contract.
Next is David Fisher. He is coming to us as a long-term middle school counselor as a substitute. Same as the other one, he'll be making the 252, 37 per day. And, uh, like the other one, the contract is very clear that this is from the date of hire, in this case, August 25th, um, through the return of our middle school counselor, which will anticipate November-ish soon.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to accept that nomination?
I move we accept the nomination of David Fisher for the position of long-term middle school substitute counselor, at a daily rate of $252.37 a day, to be paid from the general fund.
Okay, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Discussion. Uh, Mr. Fisher has also started and has been working with students. I, I've heard that, um, a lot of the kids are really enjoying even having lunch with him. So that's great. All right, anybody else have anything to say? Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle? And Debbie, yes. Okay, so I'm going to sign Mr. Fisher's contract.
The third person is Julia Kling. She is a full-time paraprofessional. And she will be, uh, working, once again, seven hours a day, 35 hours a week, uh, on the NOT HQT track as step 3.3, uh, for an hourly rate of $18.32 per hour. Of course, this is prorated because she's not starting at the start of the year, so the rest of it is prorated through the year.
Okay, do you have a motion to accept that nomination?
I move we accept the nomination of Julia Kling for the position of full-time paraprofessional, um, effective date of today.
I think it's October 1st.
Oh.
It says...
It, it says 9/24.
Does it? Okay, you're fine, go ahead.
Uh, at a pay rate of 1832 per hour, to be paid for from the general fund with benefits for the CBA.
Okay, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Discussion. So, how many more pairs do we need?
So I asked that question and the answer I'm getting is it's somewhere around two. But once again, we're always worrying about who may leave. So we're definitely a lot closer than we were at the beginning of the year.
So we still need pairs, if they're...
How many contracted do we currently have?
We have five contracted. We have room for one more per the previous board vote. I believe there's somebody in the pipeline through the contract? Yes. So that may be happening soon, uh, but this is our, our own hire, so.
Okay, so Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Yeah, Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle? And Debbie, yes. So I'm going to say...
This one right here. Okay. Next. Um, there should be a stipend list in here. Yes, there is. So this is the same stipend list as last time. You'll notice that there's a 9, 10, 25 on a lot of these positions because they were approved at the last meeting, and so this has been updated. I do want to point out that we did miss a fun and fitness instructor. Darcy Wilder is also doing the fun and fitness. Um, and I'll come back to that one in just a moment, but then if you go onto the next side or the next page, you'll see, so page 22 of the packet, you'll see that I've also filled in the eighth grade field trip folks. And I think that's it. Just going to double check to make sure I'm not missing any. Yep. So that's what we're looking to approve tonight is the eighth grade field trip folks. There's five of them listed there. And Darcy as the fun and fitness. I'll mention as part of the fun and fitness that they were under the impression that they were going to receive the stipend amount divided by three, um, as opposed to the, the one-fifth, which is the, the amount that you approved in the last meeting. Um, they said that this was what was done last year. I did go back and verify that in fact the board did approve them to between the three of them have as the, the total stipend value split by thirds. So I want you to consider that tonight. If you don't make a change, that the stipend value is what's listed there, which is 350. If you, um, do split it, then, I just got to do the math real quick. I had it worked out, but then I just put it down. So it'd be 583, 33. So once again, it's up to you. If you just want to say divided by three, that's up to you though.
So are the number of students that they're taking, um, limited? Because there's only three and not five? Or are they still taking the same amount of students?
They would take any child that has signed up for it. And so there's nobody that got turned away as a result of this.
Did you have the numbers?
I don't have the numbers, no. Did not have time to get that.
Okay. Okay, yeah. We could have, if it was a contract issue, we could have discussed it.
What's that?
It's a contract. I just want you to, I want to understand what the contract says, 350?
The contract says, um, the stipend value is broken up amongst five people. So, um, but once again, last year, the board had chosen to break that stipend up amongst three people. And they're just, they're stating that that's what they were expecting this year. They did not realize that that wasn't going to happen again this year. So I'm just simply presenting that to you as part of the question mark here.
Are there any other people that are going to sign up to be instructors? Or we're done, we've already started and this is...
It's already started, it's actually already underway. It was when they got their, uh, after the last board meeting where they, the, they were approved. I sent them contracts and time, time and effort sheets. And it was then that they raised the concern with me. And I said, well, the next board meeting, I'll bring that concern forward.
Okay, so, um, are people hearing this?
I just, I just have a question. Is this only a fall time thing or is this a fall and a springtime thing?
It's only fall this year, yep.
And do you have the dates or anything?
Yeah, it's, I don't have it in here, but yes, I have the dates, so. It's already underway. And it goes into November. Do you know the dates by any chance? I don't, oh, no. No, I don't, I don't see it.
I think it's just that we need to, I think for all stipend positions, we need to, we've already talked about it, where we have to hopefully provide clarification on the intent.
Right.
Um, and, uh, you know, I'm in, we did this last year, so I'm in support of, of this year. I've, you know, my only thing would be that we're not limiting the number of students. You know, that we're still allowing the same number of students to participate.
Right. And that we would say, I would suggest that we would say we would do this one more year until we have cleaned the contract up to make this very clear.
Yes.
So that we realize that because we approved it last year with dividing the stipend, um, we understand that their expectations when they signed up. But I think we would have to, this would be the last year until we clean up that stipend list. That would be my suggestion. Anybody else have anything to say? Are you comfortable?
I, I'm, I'm comfortable with it based on we're doing it last year and wanting to clean up language in the future.
Okay. Okay, so we would change the amounts for the three to five something?
I already turned it off, give me a second. Five, well, I'm going to double check it.
583, 33. 583, 583, 33. All right, so we would do that and, um, if people are interested in making sure that we say this would be the last year until, knowing that we're renegotiating the contract and hopefully we can change this language so it's more clear. It's up to you, whoever wants to make the motion if you want to do that. Okay. So does anybody want to make a motion?
Just stating that, just stating that this is for one year.
We're accepting, we're, we have new, we have new, um, couple of new stipend recipients, right?
Yes, I, I understand that part.
And then the, the other three, we're going to adjust what their payment would be.
Okay. Um, that, I'd like to make this adjustment in one motion.
Okay.
So I move that we authorize, um, or adjust the stipend for fun and fitness, and my, oh, my blank here.
583, 33.
To, to the three, um, instructors to $583.33, which is dividing the stipen- the available stipend among the three people.
Okay, do you want to add anything else to your motion?
That this is for, um, this year. And the plan is to clean up the language in the contract.
Okay, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, discussion. So again, normally this stipend is divided among five people according to the contract. But because of the expectations and the exception we made last year, people signed up thinking they were getting more. So we're going to honor that for this year. And then hopefully during negotiations, we can clarify the language with the stipends so that everything matches, right? Good, okay. Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle? And Debbie, yes. Okay.
Then just to approve the one, two, three, four, five, six names. So the eighth grade field trip and the fun and fitness names.
Okay, so just one fun and fitness name.
Dar- Darcy is the one fun and fitness that wasn't approved last time, and then you've got the five eighth grade field trip people.
Okay, so I move we approve the following stick, six stipends. Darcy Wilder for fun and fitness instructor, as previously discussed. And the five eighth grade field trip advisors, as listed, which are Rich Redman, Kendra Decona, Lars Zatko, Hannah Grady, Autumn Stevens, and those are at a rate of $150.
Each, yes.
Each, yes, each.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle? And Debbie, yes.
Uh, so I just want to, um, I'm going to try to calculate things. But the CBA does say five teachers at $350 each for a total of $1,850. Five times 350.
It's not that.
It's not that. Because I had gone back and looked at last year's motion and it was $600 and something dollars a piece. And I was just, so that's why I just went and looked at this because I was wondering, how did we get 616, I think it was, last year? And now we're 583. So I don't know if, because we want to be consistent with last year.
Okay, what is the new thing? We're just going to have to, um, to adjust your motion. Okay, what, what was the new number? Amend your motion, rather.
Yeah, so I think last year it was, it's $616.67. I think we said $616 last year.
Okay, $616, all right.
To be consistent with last year.
Would that be an amendment or a complete new?
Um, I, yeah. Uh, okay, so this would supersede the past, the, the last amendment.
Okay, so I move that we strike my previous motion about the, uh, rate for the fun and fitness instructors and pay them $616 as paid previously to match what's in the CBA. And to note that this is going to be until the contract is cleaned up.
Okay, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, um, discussion?
$616 each, right?
Each.
$616 each and, um, one year. The intent is for one year.
Yes.
To have a contract right now.
This is for one year only, um, just because of the issue that happened last year. And they signed up thinking that was the amount they were hoping to get, so.
I'd also like to thank them for doing this.
And thank you for doing it. It's such a great opportunity for kids. I hope a lot of kids sign up. My kids love that fun and fitness.
I did it one year.
Yeah.
I did it.
Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle? And Debbie, yes. All right.
You're in a good catch.
Yeah.
I just saw the five and three, so.
Yeah, no, exactly.
This is why we need her for the discussion.
Well, I have his, like, misphrased typo.
All right, so the, uh, next thing is the ongoing completed board. Oh, actually, I'm going to take that back. Uh, I did hand out a facilities use request. It's not on the agenda, but, uh, we did get this last minute. This is from the Stratford Recreational Sports. It's for basketball coaching clinics on October 26th, November 9th, and November 16th from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, uh, using the gymnasium. And of course, they are on file for having the appropriate insurance.
Okay, would someone like to approve this?
I move we approve the facilities use request for Stratford Recreational Sports Basketball Coaching Clinics on Sundays, October 26th, November 9th, and November 16th, from 3:00 to 6:00, noting that we do not charge the Stratford Recs rec because they're nonprofit and partner facilities and things.
I have a second.
Okay, thank you. Discussion. Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Katrina? Yes.
Kyle? And Debbie, yes. Okay. Did you want, did you want this?
I don't, I'm working on it, it's not, I'm right here. Okay, so the ongoing completed board meeting task items. Um, that, you can see the list there. Um, is there any questions, comments, desired feedback?
That, the web, the webpage for all the parent used applications, um...
It's dropped way down my list because we're working on so many other things.
Even if it was just an email from the teacher saying, this is what, this is what we use, like, it doesn't, you know, just something that people would, you know, in the meantime, until, you know, until we know exactly what everything is.
Yeah, we had like, um, I went to the kind of, for fifth grade this year, they had a meeting where they explained.
Oh, they did?
And, and so I found that useful. It was kind of, the teacher said, this is what you'll find on Alma, this is what you'll find on Google. You know, when teachers says, I don't use Google, but if it's easier for everybody to have one, everything in one place, I can start using Google Classroom. So, um, so that's helpful. But it, it's, it is kind of just like a, had a guessing game as a parent that, like, even this year, right? So I have a second grader and we're using, using a little different, using CSO or CSO. So. Dojo, and it's like, I've been through it once, I'm kind of familiar with everything. But I think it's, I don't think it has to be too elaborate, even if it's at like the teen level, where they just kind of, it's like a...
Right.
I think, I don't remember, but the, each teacher used to kind of have like a
They do have a page.
A page on the website, but I don't know, the, the webpage has gone through, you know, a lot of reworks. I don't know if that's, but it's sort of like, okay, each classroom teacher just has, like, this is what they, they use. Or this is even kind of like, uh, hey, this is what, go to Alma for this, go to Class Dojo for this, go to Google Classroom for this. I, I don't think there's, I don't think it's too many, but I think we just need to clarify where to find information.
And how they're used. I mean, I, ideally, we'd have that list and say, and be able to look at it and say, hey, this could be streamlined in the following ways. I mean, for example, my daughter's on the volleyball team and there's an app I had to download for the game schedules. They have the practice schedules that just, I didn't know of. So there's, there's a, there's a lot of apps out there.
So, um, they, they did clean the, the gas stove? Or the stove?
Yes, that's been cleaned.
That's great, that's great. Okay, does anybody else have any questions about the ongoing task list? Okay, all righty, next. Um, do you have any...
Yeah, um, I forgot about that.
Now, we ended that, we can, we can hold off. We'll have, though, just one short number.
That's up to you, I think, that's pretty quick.
Yeah, you know, we have a, we're going to hold off on B because there was some information we didn't receive.
Yep.
Okay, correspondence. Um, we did have one email yesterday, Rob did address, um, this is her name, right?
So, the email yesterday, uh, was Katie, K-U-K-E-S-H. I don't want to butcher it.
So, and, and Katie asked about if we livestream our meetings and, um, you know, to be able to, um, remotely contact us. And so Rob did tell her we do livestream our meetings and she sent them the link, right?
I did, I directed her to it and she actually wrote back and said that was very helpful, so. It felt like it, it was a very positive outcome.
Great. Um, I know that she had, had mentioned sort of like a live interaction, um, during meetings. And I did look in like some other towns local to us, they do, they must stream on like a, a different platform, almost like it's a live, like webinar or WebEx happening where like people can during public comments, like, type something out. And I don't think that we're, um, we're quite, uh, to that. But we always welcome emails
Yes.
at any time
Yes.
um, to, to reach out to us, so.
And, and they are shared during communication, like, we're sharing.
Yeah, and we have polar comments at the beginning and the end of our meetings. A lot of places I was looking, it's polar comments just at the end of their meetings.
We're really supposed to have two sessions.
And we, we have them at the beginning as well.
We're supposed to have two sessions, so, good.
Anyway.
Good, thank you. Our community calendar?
Oh, for communication, do we want to mention, we mentioned the two that we got at the...
On the comment form?
Yeah, do we want to mention them here as well?
Okay, we could do that, too.
Just briefly.
We can edit them out, listen to the other one.
Sure, um, the one was from Travis. And Travis was asking us why the school now serves not a nut butter instead of peanut butter. Um, because we used to have peanut butter earlier this year, but now we have, Travis, now we have peanut butter again.
Yeah, so we had made the decision before school started that we wanted peanut butter. Yeah, so we had made the decision before school started that we wanted peanut butter. There was a pause put on that while the nurse and food service, everyone kind of worked through switching back to peanut butter. I think the confusion may be coming from, I went and looked and our menu online does not state peanut butter for the future days. There was a period of time where it, like at the beginning of the month where it said peanut butter and now it still says not nut butter or whatever it is.
I did that fix tomorrow.
So I think that that could be causing the confusion.
Okay.
We are serving peanut butter.
Yes. Jess? Natural with sugar. Okay. We had that discussion in the thing. Never mind. Okay, you had to be there to know the story about that. Okay, next we had Rebecca McCarthy. She, uh, she brought up, um, the idea that we could have a crosswalk over to the library and then also a sidewalk from the school to the library. And then thirdly, she said a separate walkway from the lower parking lot up to the parking lot that is separate from the driveway. Um, I think that means about winter, um, if, for, for people, kids to be able to walk on it instead of walking where the cars are. I do think the two, the first two topics are probably the town, not the school, the sidewalks. I do wonder, I hear what she's saying about the crosswalk because the library does offer, you know, the fifth grade can walk over. Why doesn't somebody from the library come and walk the kids over?
They do.
They do? Okay, okay, so they have some.
A library does walk right down the road.
Okay, so they come and they walk the kids? Okay, I didn't, I thought the kids were walking by themselves. Oh, that's great, good.
And I, 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 cause there was a, I feel like you guys have assessed this, Rob, if, if it was not safe to have the kids walking up there.
So when winter comes on and they come in and salt and stuff like that, we will go and double check one side, the side closest to the SAU. Oftentimes it's me, I go out there with a shovel and scrape it down further and take the non-slip, uh, like the ice melt and sprinkle a fresh coating. I, I can't say that it's every day, but usually every time it's really bad, I'll go out and do that. I don't know how a sidewalk would make it any better because it too would have to have that treatment and that extra scraping. But I can completely understand somebody wishing there was a a better, a better path. Well, there is a railing there.
And the railing is sturdy.
It's a sturdy railing. It's a little bit off though. It's like, it's a, you know, a foot or so off, not even half a foot off, so it's, you know, you wouldn't usually walk up probably holding on to that thing. I'm just saying, I can see where the people are asking about it.
I've got to go back initially, but like, what about like steps in the hillside right next to it?
That's what I'm saying. I think that that would probably be what they're, they're most likely referring to is, is their way, instead of climbing up something that's a pretty steep incline, worrying about, do I have the right shoes on to catch, you know, good traction, having, knowing that you've got these steps that you're gonna be a bit safer on. I can definitely understand where people are coming from. It's a probably fairly significant investment. I mean, we'd have to pay a company to come out, dig into that hillside, pave, you know, or pour concrete steps most likely, put in a handrail, like it, it's, it's a significant increase and we've got a lot on the plate, but it's.
But I think if it's just something that's on the facilities committee's radar of possessing.
But I do make it as safe as I can every winter as often as I can. Like I go out there and do extra work on that most mornings to make sure it's.
Do you?
Yeah, oh yeah. Well, if Greg's over the hill, do it. I'm just saying, I'm, I'm right there. I drive up that hill and park my car, I'm right there. So I oftentimes I'm just like, oh, just grab the shovel and do it. It's not that big of a deal. I think it's all hands on board when it's slippery conditions outside. I see all sorts of people out there scraping, shoveling. I mean, April's been out there sprinkling stuff on things. It's just, I think we're all in the same boat of, we want to make sure nobody slips and falls, right? And so sometimes I probably overdo it a little bit, but I just wanna make extra sure.
Okay, so next, community calendar. You know, I was thinking about something that, that, what was brought up, um, in the public forum about advertising and I don't know if the schools should be doing this or if the school board, because the school really doesn't write in the calendar. I don't know if they should have their own little blurb, but I think, I think at one point this, the administration did do a blurb. This was years ago, but to announce when there's like a Christmas holiday concert or a play because the feedback we received at the community forum was, you know, for the overall non-school community to be able to come to these events, that they would like to be involved. So I don't know if, I, I think it is the school.
So we have a calendar on our website. I wonder if it couldn't just be a standing link that you guys put in every single month.
Well, maybe, I don't know if the administration wants to think of a.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I, I agree, like a little, just like a sort of a, like, you know.
Like on the principal's desk, or not principal, the dean's desk or something.
Yes, I agree. I think that would be.
They used to do that and this was probably, I don't know, like ten years.
And where I think a, a lot of that population is physically reading.
Yes.
This community, the community, they have an online version, but the, a large population of the community and even myself, I read the physical version, so.
What kind of space, word count do I have? I just wanna know how much space we have, because.
Well, I guess we'd have to touch base with.
Yeah, you probably have to reach, I can forward you the email for the, um, for the people over at the calendar.
Yeah.
Email address.
They could do like, you know, four hundred words or something. They don't have to do like a ton.
They usually fit it, at least with our articles, they fit them in wherever they, they vary inside.
Yeah, and we, we wrote a really lengthy one of, I think it was the dam update a couple of years ago.
Yes, yes, that was very long.
And it, it wasn't a concern.
Just give me the contact, we'll take it from there. I just, I didn't know how this whole thing works.
I think it's a great idea. They did it years ago and, because the school board, we, we're dealing like with budgets and facility and the, the administration, they should be probably just bragging a little bit about the kids and some of the things.
Well, maybe it's not gonna be an issue to get Natalie to brag about her kids.
Yes, yes, yeah. And, and even, I guess they wanted to, maybe a link to the athletic schedule because they also mentioned that.
Jeff can easily do that.
More, more advertise, like advertise the play, maybe make a pamphlet and to hang at the eyes of glass or put it on the sign, stuff like that.
So now our community calendar thing, what are we doing?
Uh, we, so we just, we just did one that we, we touched on budget season coming up. I don't have any ideas for the next one.
So the next one would be published in November?
The, the next one will come out at the end, very end of October. Yes, so.
Okay, so we don't have to, we would have another meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have another meeting. Also, just for them to know, isn't the fifteenth a deadline for the submissions?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, that's like you have to, they wanted to do it for, we're gonna have to do it like for November. So they could be at the holiday concert, do we have any of those?
I don't, I don't know.
Put it out, put it out, but that would be lovely if that happened.
Yes, okay. I don't, I don't know, we used to. Okay, um.
So every month is due by the fifteenth?
Yes.
It doesn't change, okay. Thanks.
Alrighty, um, so committee cow, uh, updates. Policy committee? Uh, we're meeting on October third. Okay. Alrighty, facilities?
We have not held a meeting.
Which are always busy. Okay, food service, we're all set. Education committee?
I don't think, I should really reach out. It's been quiet.
Your meeting of the dean should be coming out. It's Octo, that's in October, usually around the sixteenth or the seventeenth, meeting of the dean.
They don't usually give us too much of a heads up, so, but I will.
Yeah. Okay, wellness committee, you just sent us.
October eighth?
October eighth, that's the wellness committee. Transportation committee? Okay, athletic committee, no, we will be meeting, I think, the first week in October. We don't have our meeting scheduled yet, but it's probably gonna be around the first.
Just to remind folks that we do have the winter coaches that we're actively seeking.
Yes, the winter, that's why we're meeting because we're, that's the deadline for applications for winter coaches, so we're gonna get that going. Now the New Hampshire School Board delegate resolutions. So we have in our packets copies of the resolutions. Um, and just for people at home, the New Hampshire School Board Association, every year asks school boards if they have something a resolution they would like, um, the New Hampshire School Board Association to sort of work on to help change some regulations, some laws. And I think we had, how many of them in here? There were like ten maybe? Actually, I think there were maybe eleven. So, just from briefly going through this, what I saw, every resolution was basically the New Hampshire School Board is saying that they don't support that particular resolution because they already have their own in the works. Did everybody see that pretty much?
Sure, yeah, there's, there's a lot of.
There's a couple that like amended current ones.
Yeah.
Did anything, uh, there's several of them were about the whole thing about open enrollment, being able to go to any school district you want. And then the sending school pays eighty percent, that, that whole thing. Several of the resolutions were against that. And then the New Hampshire School Board Association has already written several of their own resolutions.
The ball's, the ball's, I don't know, we'll talk about that.
Okay, okay, so, um, does anybody, is there anything that popped out to you that was very like we have to really get there and support this?
No, I think that we should give Kyle the day off.
Yeah. The only thing I disagreed with was one, and that was it was, yeah, it was, was it October twenty? I have, I have two that I just picked with them. Okay, so then the, the big one that I, I didn't like was the last one. I supported the resolution from Manon Dak, Nodna, whatever you say.
Bananak.
Say that again, whatever the name of that place is. Their school board, so they wanted people to be allowed to be on the school board if they have a disability or they have a, a child or somebody that they're caring for with a disability, that they could still be on the school board, but they don't have to attend meetings in person. I support that, but I didn't like the amendment. They're saying everybody can be remote. And I think we went through that for COVID.
I, yeah.
And it didn't work. It's not like a public meeting. We had glitches with the electronics trying to meet. It was hard to get people if they were calling in to let them in for questions. I personally don't know why they are supporting that. I think right now they have, you can have one board member remote.
Yeah, I think right now you have to have a, or you have to have a quorum.
Right, so that we can have one remote, right, out of five of us, you can have one remote. But there, you know, it sort of, to me, it took away, the intent was to be inclusive of, of people who have disabilities. And then they changed it. And it's like, I don't know, it's worth fighting for. Normally, they all just go for school board associations. I don't know if anybody else.
So do we need to make a motion if we want to alleviate them?
Okay, so nobody's carrying that thing, you just wanna know if Kyle wants to go. Okay.
Well, if he's not going, then.
Why talk about it?
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion about sending Kyle to this, um, delegate assembly on Saturday, October twenty-fifth at ten thirty A M. for the entire day?
I move that we ask Kyle not to attend the New Hampshire School Board delegate assembly on Saturday, October twenty-fifth.
We have.
I'll, I'll.
Okay, discussion. Um, I, I think the reason you're saying that is because often our voice isn't usually heard and they just usually go along with what every New Hampshire School Board Association suggests. And in these, every single one of them, New Hampshire School Board Association does not, does not support the resolutions.
There's, there's also the fact that it's a form of lobbying, which I don't think should be done with public money, but that's.
How do you feel, Kyle?
I'm abstaining.
Alright. Beautiful fall, beautiful fall day. Okay, alright, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yep.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Abstain.
Alright, Debbie, yes. Alright, you're off the hook.
Just a quick update on the dam.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's more broad than just the dam, but I just figured this is a great place to put it. So Bear Pod just did their annual walkabout. Um, I was gonna go with them. It was on Monday, I was gonna go with them, but then I had a couple of things to move over the weekend, so I couldn't. But a couple of folks, uh, from Bear Pod did go out, they walked the property, they're flagging the back of the property line. They got most of that done. They said they'll do some more next year. Um, they did note two things on their journey. One was that there looks like a squatter's camp built up on the property. They took a picture of it. I did send it to the chief. The chief verified that that is an old one. Um, and it, and it did look pretty rundown, like it's not really cleanly, because leaves everywhere, so on and so forth, so. Uh, we feel like that's okay. The second thing they raised concern about was that the gate is open, not closed and locked. I just simply said in a previous meeting of the board, it was decided to leave the gate open. But I just wanted to give you that update from them, um, that that's where they were at. They didn't recommend that the gate be closed. He just, I think he was surprised that it was open. So anyway, thanks for.
I thought we had mixed messages about emergency vehicles being able to get there and they didn't want us to block it.
No, I remember we, that was one of the concerns, but like I said, the, the police and the fire department are gonna get through that gate no matter what I put on it. That's not a real concern. They got jaws for life, they can rip my car to pieces. That was what I remember is that you wanted people to have greater level of access to fishing and so on and so forth, as opposed to just people with four-wheel drive vehicles that could go around the gate.
Okay, good. Alright, um, so now we have, oh, you wanna do, oh, set future board meeting. The CBNA meeting is November twelfth.
Well, October eighth, just to remind you, is when we had talked about having Natalie come back and give you a preview to the curriculum stuff that we're looking to put onto the webpage, so I just wanted to remind you that that's what October eighth is and then October twenty-second is the presentation of the budget.
Okay, and then we will still have a meeting at Co Brown, probably still do budget stuff after that one. When's Thanksgiving?
It's the very last week of November again.
The week after the nineteenth.
Okay, so we're good with that. Alright.
That's why November twelfth and nineteenth are the two dates.
Right.
Last year you did decide, if I remember correctly, not to do them both because they were one week apart. But that's the only way I can get two meetings into the month of November because of where Thanksgiving falls.
Yeah, because of the way the, you know.
We could see how much we get done and then we can decide. Right, okay.
Okay, we also have to remember when we're going to be, we're entering like negotiations as well, so we may need to be meeting.
Oh, we don't have, we have to add negotiations committee on the committee update.
That's a good point.
I will say that Katrina and I are going to be meeting with the, um, S D A team on September thirtieth, I thought. At four thirty, was it four thirty?
Yes, four thirty, on September thirtieth.
Yeah, okay. So, and I think they were going to touch base with the S E U to see if we could use a conference.
They haven't yet, but I'm sure, we'll make it happen.
Okay, great, okay. Alright, so other. Do we have, oh, I just wanted to touch base with, um, we did have a nice turnout for our public forum. We received a lot of good ideas and had some good questions and feedback. One thing that is coming up very soon, apparently, um, there's a volunteer fair. Did she say it was October third?
But I think fifth.
Fifth, October fifth at the Grange and, um, that is a time where people can go and sign up for different organizations who are there to ask for volunteers. I don't know if we wanted to at least just put together like a little sign or something with a sign up and just say the school is looking for any of your gifts and talents or something like that to, this is what we were hearing.
Yep.
At the meeting, that people wanted to reach out to the community, get community people who have gifts and talents
Yep.
that would like to come and maybe do some enrichment activities with the kids or, you know.
Volunteer support.
Volunteer support, reading for kids, so.
Natalie doesn't know it yet, but I'll give her that task because she makes really great blogs.
There you go. If she could do that and figure out like, are the areas of volunteers that we would need, like, you know, enrichment areas, you know, do you do woodworking? Are you, um, an artist or are you, whatever?
The clubs, Rob mentioned, like a chess club.
Yes, then the clubs. Would you like to run a club, like a chess club or a?
I'm surprised my phone hasn't been, I was waiting for it to be on, so maybe she's not watching.
Probably bedtime. Um, and then also, like you suggested, like reading to kids or whatever. So, I think if we could just make something with a sign up with a little blurb, we could put it on the table at least. That's perfect, thank you. Alright, so, so again, the public forum, we received a lot of information about that and we are acting on it. Thank you for the ideas. Okay, public comments?
A couple other things. I just wanted to mention, um, under other.
Yeah.
Um, newsletters seem like they've been sort of sporadic on the middle school side. Like I don't think I got one this week. And, but I do have the link to get to the teacher newsletters, but then those aren't always complete either, so just, you know, we wanna, I feel like communication has been a big topic of ours and I think we have made big improvements by sort of like slide backwards.
Are we talking about the one that's sent out once a week by the office?
By the deans.
Yeah, okay.
So I think the, we didn't get a middle school one this year, this week. Did we say that they were being sent out on?
Well, we had gotten.
I've seen it on different days.
We, we, we've got, we had gotten feedback in one of our surveys that it would be helpful to get them at the, like on Friday instead of Monday, so that you can have the weekend to prepare for what's coming up the next week. The elementary one is going out on Friday, but the middle school one's still going out on Monday, but I, we didn't like give any direction, but.
But, but we didn't get a middle school.
We haven't gotten a middle school one.
And then you were saying something about the link to the middle school teachers?
The grades, the grades have a link.
Are they working now?
They work for me.
Okay.
The, the link, when I did it, the link was working, but I wasn't seeing updates. I was like, the same thing over.
We haven't gotten an updated, we haven't gotten an updated newsletter yet since, since that conversation.
Since I, okay.
Um, so I, but the links that you sent, I, those are working.
Those are working.
But they're not always complete necessarily with, with teacher updates.
Okay.
Um, and then I also just wanted to bring up that we had open house and it was great to see the turnout for our open house. Um, yeah, so, and there was like a, you know, the library was set up at the table, I think. Like Janet, yeah, Janet and Tracy were there.
Right.
Um, with like a, I think the parent information center possibly was there, so it was nice to see just.
The library was there.
The library was there, yes.
Right, and, um, I do wanna say, I know Natalie was aware of this, Natalie was dancing and. Right. And, um, I do wanna say, I know Natalie was aware of this. Natalie was dancing and singing, "You're out." She was very engaging. We did talk about, that was a Tuesday and everybody had games, like most of them middle school. I think they had two soccer games, two volleyball games. Um, I don't know if they had cross country or whatever, but a lot of people missed it because they were acting.
Yeah, I, I get it.
So she talked about, I flew in at 6:30 because I was flying from Barrington, um, but.
I don't know how predictable the games are when we're setting this calendar for the year, but I can talk to them about it and see if there's a way they can schedule on a non-game day. But once again, I just don't know, like are games always on Tuesdays?
Most games are Tuesdays and Thursdays, but you can look, they should have the schedules in early August. The league revenue should have it.
We'll, we'll work on it. We'll work on it.
Yeah.
Um, and then one other thing, when I was, um, perusing other school boards' meetings and stuff, something that I thought was cute was, they would have students come and lead the Pledge of Allegiance at their meeting. So it's just like some, obviously we're not trying to force students to come to the school board meeting, but if it's, like, I think some kids would be excited about that. Like if they got nominated or something.
Maybe like once a month or something.
To come, yeah, lead our Pledge of Allegiance or something. They got to be on camera or something. It'd be cute.
I'll work with them on it. Um, I, I think that, like I said, like I just heard somebody over here say, I, I don't think I'd want them just to be here for the pledge. It'd be nice if we're highlighting something. They, they said they helped lead the pledge, but they also then maybe have a minute or two at the beginning of the meeting to talk about something that they're excited about or, yeah. And I, and I love having students come to board meetings. We used to do it in my last district all the time. Uh, it's a great thing. The community feels good about it. The kids feel good about it. So I absolutely love that idea. So we're ready for something like that.
So especially in the beginning of a meeting so that they can go home and go to bed.
Oh, yeah, it has to be the very beginning.
We don't wanna use them here this week. Okay. Alright, perfect. Very good. Alright, public comments? New public here. Okay, um, motion?
Motion to adjourn.
There you go, second.
I have a second.
Session two, okay. Eric?
Yes.
Jess, Katrina, Kyle and Debbie yes. You're adjourned.
Both of you are short.
And we didn't even have to go through the resolutions. I was prepared.
Well, that took forever last year. There are a lot more to do.